If we could, I'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Appreciate everyone being here. We have a quorum of our board team here this evening. Mr. Parker may be here, but most likely not. He's out of town. So that covers item one on our agenda. Our second item is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Ryan Connell, the student pastor at College Hills Baptist Church, and he's going to lead us in our invocation. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Let's go to our God in prayer. Father God, we thank you tonight. God, I'm reminded from your word that you are the God who hears, you're the God who speaks, that you know our needs, that you are the God who answers. And I know, I know, God, there are times that we feel so hopeless, we feel the desperate need for answers in the world around us. And I'm so thankful that we can come to you. And so, Father God, tonight, as we know that you hear our prayers, God, I ask for your guidance and your leadership in our schools. God, I thank you for each one of the students, spread across our great city. God, that you would protect them. God, I pray that they would learn, that they would grow. God, that they would become credible young men and women in our community and communities all over our nation, all over our world. I pray for our teachers, for the leadership, for the principals, you know, that work so hard to prepare and to care for each one of our children. God, protect them and guide them, use them in powerful ways. I thank you for each one of these men and women here tonight that will make choices. You know, they will, they will work, they will, they will think through the, each of these different decisions that they need to make tonight. Give them clear, clarity of thought, give them great understanding. And God, as they, as they lead in ways that will influence our schools and our children, just do a mighty work to guide them and lead them through that tonight. So we, we ask for your guidance over this. We pray for your peace over this. Again, God, we, we live in a nation, I feel like, that is in such turmoil right now, and we need your, your assurance and your direction. And so I pray that what would happen during this time, right here in this room, would be very clear and very, very honoring to you. So guide them and use them. In your name I pray.
Thank you. We appreciate that. At this time, we have some students from Reagan Elementary School who are going to lead us in our pledges. As they come forward, I'll introduce their names, introduce them to you. We have Jack Fellers, Isabella Gonzalez, Brian Potter, and Jalisa Suarez. So if y'all will stand, they're going to lead us in our pledges.
(inaudible)
If we, y'all stay there just a second, if y'all don't mind, in case we have some parents that want to take some pictures. So, turn that way this time. Okay? While they're taking pictures, they're fifth graders at, at Reagan, so they'll be in middle school next year. Okay. Thank y'all for being here. I'll read our script now. Thank y'all again. Good evening and welcome. As President of the Board of Trustees, this San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's meeting of our regular board meeting. Also welcome those of you who are watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on each one of our agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak on any, to the board on any item not on our agenda, an opportunity to do so this evening. I will also make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they'd like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of the San Angelo Independent School District's permanent legal record. In order that the tape will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence their cellphones at this particular time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting, to thank you for taking the time to join us this evening. We certainly appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our school district. We'll move to item four, which is recognitions, and Ms. Highsmith is going to help us with that.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Lehman and members of the board. Thank you so much for this opportunity to honor nine outstanding young people who are winners in the 2016 Fire Prevention Poster Contest brought to us by the San Angelo Fire Department. And this evening, Mr. A.J. Turner, our safety specialist, will be helping unite students with their posters. And students, when you hear your name called, please come forward if you will, and your poster will be here for you. And we would ask that you form a line here and stay in the line until everybody's been announced, and then we'd like to get some pictures of you at that point. Also, if you are here with students as a parent, family member, teacher, principal, please stand while your student comes forward, and that way we will be able to recognize you as well. This year's theme for the 2016 Fire Prevention, Prevention Poster Contest is "Don't Wait, Check the Date." So that refers to actual smoke alarms. So you may be seeing a smoke, an abundance of smoke alarms on our posters, but that's what students are trying to portray in their work, in their artwork, that the date needs to be checked, and make, everyone needs to make sure that smoke alarms are up to date and batteries are good, and that they are ready to work. So students, now, we're going to begin, we, we, the district doesn't have every single winner in town, although we'd love to have had that, but we want others to have a chance at this as well. So we have nine of these winners, and three are from other campuses. But we're going to start with our third grade winners. And in fourth place in third grade, we have Alex Zamoripa from Bradford Elementary. Alex, would you come forward? And his teacher is Mrs. Dorinda Jones. We have the third grade, third place winner as well, Brady Stewart from Fort Concho Elementary. Is Brady here? Okay. We will be glad to get his poster back to him, and his teacher is Mrs. Tammy Flewett. That is all that we have for third grade. And now for fourth grade, we have the third place winner in fourth grade, Ms. Hunter Henry. Hunter is a student at Fort Concho, and she is in Ms. Jennifer Rivas's class. Second place in fourth grade went to Zoe Moore. Zoe is a student at Santa Rita in Mrs. Lynn Springer's class. And we have the first place winner in fourth grade, Naomi Bajant from Lamar, and Mrs. Nichols is her teacher. Now for our fifth grade winners, we took all four spots in the fifth grade. Fourth place winner, Nadia Alvarado. Is Nadia here? She's from Fort Concho, and Ms. Penny Watson is her teacher. Our third place winner in fifth grade is Landry Als. Landry is from Lamar, and Ms. Kelsey Curry is her teacher. We have second place in fifth grade, Ms. Jocelyn Parker. Jocelyn is also from Lamar Elementary, and Ms. Courtney Young is her teacher. And our first place winner in fifth grade is Gabrielle Alvarado from San Jacinto Elementary And Gabrielle's teacher is Ms. Hilda Davis. And students, we are so proud of you. We want to congratulate you, and thank you so much for being here this evening. If you'll look right out this way, we have several people who would like to take pictures And students, we're going to give you another round of applause for your great work. Mr. Lehman, this evening, we have another very special recognition. We are recognizing this evening our DESK Board. The people on the DESK Board are very near and dear to our hearts in San Angelo ISD. About 11 years ago, their president and founder, Board President Eric Wilson, had an idea, knowing the need in our district for students who did not have school supplies. He had an idea that he would form a board of concerned citizens, and they would set about to raise funds for the students of SA ISD who were in need of school supplies. And I must share with you the amount that they have given this year for school supplies, and then also their total in these, over these years. This year, our DESK Board gave students of San Angelo ISD through their campuses school supply money in the amount of $59,048.73. For those who may not know, DESK stands for Donate Educational Supplies to Kids. The organization, since its inception, has raised and given to campuses in our district over $537,000 for the purpose of meeting the needs of those in the district who are unable to purchase their own school supplies. Each campus in the district each year receives a percentage of the total amount of money raised, based on the number of students who receive assistance through our free and reduced meal program. At the annual DESK presentation each August, campus administrators are given their funds so that supplies may be purchased before the school year begins. This evening, we are very honored to have several members of the DESK Board with us. And Dr. Detloff, would you please come forward and help me recognize these DESK Board members who are here this evening? DESK Board members, as we call your name, please come forward. Dr. Detloff will present a certificate, and we'd like for you to stay as well for a photo, and then the board members and, and our administrators would like to greet you and thank you as well. DESK President Eric Wilson. DESK Board Member Boomer Kingston. I don't believe Andy Meyer is with us. He is with us? Andy, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Come forward, please. Andy is also on the DESK Board. And Ken Grimm. All right. Ken Grimm was not able to be here. Other board members who put in a great amount of time and effort on this board, Treasurer Jaclyn Ochoa, and other board members, Elizabeth Joest and Kathy Self, David Wagner, Cheryl Book, and Ella Nichols. Please join me in a round of applause from SA ISD's friends, the DESK Board. Mr. Lehman, thank you so much. Mr. Lehman, that concludes our recognitions this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Highsmith. It's hard to believe, you know, in 11 years, I raised $537,000. That's, what a great effort on behalf of our students, and so unselfish, so we really appreciate them and the DESK Board for all their hard work. Our next item is, I mentioned earlier, for public comment, reserved for public comment. Do we have anyone this evening wishing to speak to our board team? Now would be a great time to come forward. I see no one willing to do that, so we'll move to our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes?
Move to approve?
We have a motion from Mr. Hernandez and a second from Mr. Dindal to approve the minutes of our September 12, 2016 Finance and Pre-Agenda Board Workshop and our September 19, 2016 Regular Board Meeting. Is there any board comments or questions concerning our minutes? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is our report section, item seven. We have a student enrollment report from the sixth Monday of school. That's provided by Dr. Bright and our Friday fax, so we've all seen that. We also, as part of our Friday fax, information provided to our board team, we received our first six weeks' daily average attendance report, which is always important because we get paid, part of the payment we get from the state of Texas is about how many kids we have show up, so we look like we had a really good job in making sure students are attending class. I have that Shelley's going to do an academic update, but actually, Dr. Detloff's going to do that for us, so we have an update on academic progress by our superintendent, Dr. Detloff.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Last Friday, we had a truly remarkable honor and event take place. Deborah Campbell, a speech and credit recovery teacher at San Angelo Central High School, was named the Texas State Secondary Teacher of the Year. This is the highest honor a secondary teacher can obtain. In an earlier communication, I believe the number was about out of approximately 136,000 teachers across the state of Texas. So San Angelo ISD, and we had the Texas State Teacher of the Year for the secondary level, which is an unbelievable honor, and we attended a meeting from TASSA, the Texas Association of School Administrators, sponsored the event at the Bob Bullock Museum in Austin, Texas on Friday. So it was an honor and a privilege to be there, and we are so thankful of the work that Deborah Campbell and her staff do, and it is truly an honor. And this is the first time this has happened in the history of San Angelo, and as you might know, most school districts never receive this honor. So it is a remarkable honor, and we are just deeply grateful for this opportunity to have Deborah Campbell represent San Angelo ISD and the state of Texas.
Yeah, thanks. It's, that's a huge honor, and at some point in time, we'll make sure we, Deborah's pretty humble, and, but we'll make sure we get her up here and, and recognize her for receiving that award, and certainly makes us proud as, as members of SA ISD, for us to have someone who's recognized out of 136,000 teachers. We'll move forward with our consent items. We have consent items A through L. Do we have, do we need to remove any items from A through L? If not, I'll have them, entertain a motion to approve items A through L. Do we have a second? We have a, we have a sleepy board this evening. We have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve our consent items. Consent item A is consider donations. Consent item B is to consider the district's dyslexia plan. Consent item C is to consider our school health advisory council for 2016-2017 school year. Item D is to consider CDA local investment policy for the San Angelo Independent School District. Item E is to consider 2016-2017 authorized list of investment brokers or dealers. Item F is to consider 2016-2017 authorized list of investment training providers. Item G is to consider instructional materials selection committee for 2017. Item H is to consider BQA local and BQB local board policy. Item E, excuse me, item I is to consider bid number 16-022 for library books, periodicals, supplies, and equipment. Item J is to consider cooperative purchasing organizations that the district might use in the coming year. Item K is to consider granting easement to SJT Partners LLC. And item L is to ratify administration's action in seller properties. These are properties that are delinquent in taxes that we sell in conjunction with either city or county entities. I would remind everyone who's watching our telecast on, on Channel 4, and also those in our audience that, as I mentioned earlier, all these items have been discussed in greater detail at our pre-agenda board workshop, which was last Monday. Do we have any further comment about any of our consent items A through L? Do we have any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item nine, to consider our bills, accounts, and financial statements for September of 2016.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion for, to, for approval from Mr. Archer, and we have a second from Mr. Gallegos. Is there any comments or questions from our board team?
Mr. Lehman, just a note to our viewers that in our effort at transparency, we provide all of these reports online. You go to our website, saisd.org, and click on the transparency button right in the middle of the homepage.
Thanks, Mr. Archer. Pages and pages of transparency, so.
Great late-night reading.
That's right. If anybody wants to look at that, and we're really proud that, you know, we display that on our website, and where anybody can go out there and look at that. Any public comment or other comments from our board team? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Item 10 is consider bid number 16-021 for maintenance, transportation, and miscellaneous supplies. Mr. Dindal's going to recuse himself because he is one of our bidders for, for supplies, miscellaneous supplies, so he will not vote at, on this item. Mr. Rigdon, I see you there. Anything you want to share about that for us?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is our annual bid for maintenance, transportation, and miscellaneous supplies. This bid establishes a list of vendors that are used by maintenance and transportation departments throughout the year. This year, we had 139 vendors respond to this bid, which is an increase of 11 vendors over last year. Maintenance and transportation will use these vendors to secure supplies, equipment, and services. Any supplier service that costs $3,500 or more each will be required to be accompanied by an attempt to secure three quotes. The contract period for this bid is November 1 of 16, 2016, to October 31 of 2017. The administration recommends approval of these vendors on the attached bid tab. 139.
Thanks, Mr. Rigdon. Any questions from anyone on our board team? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. We have a motion from Mr. Archer and a second from Mr. Gallegos to accept the administration's recommendation for approval of vendors as provided on our attached bid tab. Do we have any further comment from our board team?
I think it's worth giving credit to our staff and our purchasing department in particular. 139 folks, there were times in my previous years where we did not have near that many. I think you noted, this is 11 more than last year, so good job, Mr. Rigdon.
Thanks, Mr. Archer. Other comments or questions? Any public comment? If not, and all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Motion passes. Our next item is item 11, to consider the, oh, I'm sorry. Have Mr. Dindal come back. Our next item's item 11, to consider our construction method for 2016-2017 revitalization projects as well as capital projects planned by our board. Mr. Rigdon?
Yes, sir. Do you want to take these one at a time, or do you?
Yeah, let's do them one at a time.
Construction method for 2016-2017 revitalization and capital projects. A list of projects has been slated for revitalization or capital project work for 2016-2017 fiscal year. In order for the district to proceed, the board must approve a construction method for the projects according to Texas Government Code 2267-056. Our attorney recommends that we seek board approval at the beginning of the year to cover all revitalization or capital projects that arise during the fiscal year. The list of projects this year includes, but is definitely not limited to, the Fort Concho Classroom Edition, parking repairs at Transportation, renovation of Lou Gehrig Hall Phase 2, banned doors at Central, front entry window replacement at Austin Elementary. doors at Central, front entry window replacement at Austin Elementary, and HVAC replacement at Central Freshman Campus. It has been determined that competitive seal proposal provides the best value for the district on these projects. Due to the nature of the project or construction, the recommended method for the above projects is competitive seal proposals. The administration recommends approval of the following resolution, which you have a copy of that, and I think Marta has the original, identifying the preferred construction method for the 2016-2017 revitalization and capital projects as competitive seal proposals.
Thanks, Mr. Rigdon. Questions or comments from our Board Team? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Thanks, Mr. Archer. We have a motion from Mr. Archer and a second from Mr. Dindal. I'll read that resolution. It says, whereas Texas Government Code 2267.056A provides that the Board of Trustees of a school district that is considering a construction contract using one of the methods specified by Texas Government Code 2267 must, before advertising, determine which method provides the best value for the district. And whereas the San Angelo Independent School District is currently considering a list of revitalization and capital projects for the year 2016-2017, which will require the designation and use of a method specified by Texas Government Code Chapter 2267. And whereas the Board of Trustees of San Angelo Independent School District is of the opinion that the competitive seal proposal method pursuant to Texas Government Code Chapter 2267 Subchapter D provides the best value for the school district on the construction programs under consideration. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District that the competitive seal proposal method is determined to provide the best value for the district on 2016-2017 revitalization and capital projects. And once we approve our motion, it will be passed, approved, and adopted by the Board of Trustees effective this evening. So, that's our resolution. Any other Board comments or questions or any public comment? Just one comment on my behalf, that's, we used to do these project by project, and now we just do it for the entire year, so that makes it a little bit easier for us, but certainly on all projects, whether they be capital projects that we're starting from the ground up or revitalization projects that we're continuing, continuing to work on as we improve the facilities of our district, then all those will be under a consent, a competitive seal proposal. And that gives us the opportunity to, you know, get a bid from someone and then kind of negotiate or continue to negotiate in that process once we get that bid, and really allows us to kind of tighten down that bid and provide the best value for the district, or that's the thoughts that our Board Team has. So, any other comments or questions? If not, I'll call for the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is Consider Delegation of Authority for 2016-2017 Revitalization and Capital Projects.
Yes, sir. A list of projects which we just covered has been slated for revitalization and capital project work for 16, 2016-2017. This agenda item is to delegate authority to act on behalf of the district according to the Texas Government Code, again, 2267-053. The Board has the right to delegate the authority for opening, reviewing, ranking, and recommending an award for each construction project. This committee will serve in an advisory capacity to assist the Board in selecting the best qualified contractor for this, for each project, I should say. To ensure a fair and impartial scoring of criteria, a committee approach will be used in scoring and ranking the best qualified contractor to perform our work. The administration recommends approval of a committee composed of the Assistant Superintendent for Business Services, the Director of Maintenance, Director of Purchasing, and the Architect or Engineer assigned to each individual project. With that, I ask that you consider delegation and delegating that authority to that committee to review and.
Thanks, Mr. Rigdon. So, any, do we have a motion to approve?
Move.
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve the committee composed of the Superintendent of Business Services, the Director of Maintenance, the Director of Purchasing, and the Architect or Engineer that have been assigned to each of these projects. Is there further Board comment or questions? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is Item 13, Consider Selection Criteria for 2016-2017 Revitalization and Capital Projects.
Yes, sir. In order for us to proceed, the Board must approve the selection criteria for the projects according to Texas Government Code 2267-056B. Prior to a construction project being advertised for bid, selection criteria must be adopted by the Board for use in awarding the contract to a potential contractor. I am providing a weighted scoring, a weighted selection criteria table for use in making the selections for the 2016-2017 revitalization and capital projects. Our construction method will be competitive seal proposals for these projects. If you look at the next two pages, it shows you, sorry, the next three pages, what our criteria is and a questionnaire that we use to determine some of the items that are on the scoring criteria. With that, the administration recommends adopting the selection criteria as it appears on the following pages for the 2016-2017 revitalization and capital projects.
Thanks, Mr. Rigdon. Rigdon, questions or comments? If not, motion to approve?
Move to approve.
We have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Archer to approve the administration's recommendations adopting the selection criteria outlined in our Board Packet. That would, basically, there's just three criteria in addition to the questionnaire that Mr. Rigdon referred to, but the first is 50% of our weighted, our criteria is weighted towards the monetary price, 40% is weighted toward the overall business experience, past experience, the capabilities of that particular bidder, and reputation that they have with, with people that are in our industry or in our, in the same type of work that they're doing, and also their safety record. So, we look at all those things as part of the 40% criteria, and then we also look at the financial stability of that particular firm and whether they're going to be able to complete the project based on whether they're fiscally sound enough to do the work. So, those are our criteria. Any public comment concerning this recommendation? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our final item that we need to consider this evening is Consider Wage Rate for 2016-2017 Revitalization and Capital Projects. Again, Mr. Rigdon's going to help us with that.
Yes, sir. This is the final, the final of the four that are required every year. This agenda item is to adopt a wage rate for the 16-17 revitalization and capital projects. Prior to advertising and awarding a bid for construction projects, the Board needs to adopt a prevailing wage rate to be used for these projects. The administration is recommending the adopted wage rate for Tom Green County as approved by the U.S. Department of Labor for building construction on March 6, 2015, because we believe this rate best reflects the conditions of San Angelo. This is, by the way, this is referred to as the Davis Bacon Act. They're the ones that, Davis Bacon Act is the one that started all this, and that's where you go to download these wage rates, and they change periodically but not too often, and they do go county by county, state by state. The administration recommends approval of the prevailing wage rate scales as designated on the following pages.
Thanks. Questions concerning our prevailing wage rate? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Archer and a second from Mr. Dindal to approve the administration's recommended prevailing wage rate scales as outlined in our Board Packet. And these are for Arian and Tom Green Counties. Any question or comments concerning our motion? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks, Mr. Rigdon. We appreciate, as Mr. Archer said, your hard work and we have a lot of jobs to do that we're working on, so this takes care of all the formalities that we have to deal with in order to continue to work on improving the capital assets that the district has. I'll make some announcements. We are going to go into closed session this evening, but our announcements, our Finance and Pre-Agenda Board Workshop is scheduled for November 14, 2016, and our Regular Board Meeting is November 21.
Mr. Lehman, I had a conflict in December and asked Marta what our dates were in December. That's the 5th and the 12th. That's not our.
That's our vacation period.
Right. It's the 5th and the 12th are our dates for our meetings in, in December.
So, we'll just be getting out of one meeting, we'll head to another one. The 21st and then the 5th, right? Okay.
The 19th is the start, the first day of the holiday.
I don't know why it couldn't work that day. Okay. 5th, 12th, that's good. Yeah, max, we'll probably cough. Okay, so, we're going to go into closed session. We're going to do that, we're allowed to do that under Texas Government Code, let's see, 551074 to talk about personnel matters of the district. So, we will come back and close our meeting, but right now, we're going to go into closed We will, we're returning from closed session. We took no official Board action and certainly, we didn't take any votes while we were in closed session, and I don't think we have anything else to discuss, so here are no objections, we'll stand adjourned.